I'd like to call the meeting of Board of Education to order. If you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Education meeting tonight. We have a lot of exciting things on the agenda. So we hope you will stick around for the whole meeting, although I'm not sure that all of it will be of interest to all of you, but there are some good things in here. So we do welcome you. I will remind you, as I've done every week since we started doing this, or every month, that we do videotape our board meetings, and the videotaping equipment is in the back. So if you would like to be on television and you've never been on, you may turn around and look at the camera, and you are officially on TV. There we go, good job. Our first order of business tonight is the adoption of our agenda.
Mr. President and fellow Board members, with a full house here tonight, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mr. President, may I offer a substitute motion, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. It's all right, no worries. We'd like to move to adopt the agenda with one amendment, and we're going to remove item 7.03 for later discussion, if you would.
Second.
Second. Okay, we do have a motion, a substitute motion and a second on the floor to adopt the agenda with the amendment to remove item 7.03 for later discussion. And we do have a second on that. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Clark. The next order of business is our superintendent's report, and there are, I believe, two separate pieces to that tonight, so I will turn it over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Board members, it is indeed an exciting night for yours truly here in the school district as we get the opportunity to process through the report from this superintendent relative to his first 100-plus days in the school district. But prior to that, as you recall, last month, we went through Board Priorities 1 and 2 with our update, and Ms. Phelan was enjoying some much-needed time somewhere else, and we committed to having her take us through Priority 3 and updating us there tonight. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Phelan, followed by my presentation of the 100-day report. Ms. Phelan.
Priority 3 is about trust in our leadership team, communication, involvement, and collaboration, and constructive engagement in our community. And I am going to skip right over this page because it's all about what Dr. Carpenter's done to be introduced to our community. And basically, since January, he has been all over the place and talked to so many people. But he will share more about that. Our accomplishments for Priority Number 3 so far is that we've launched and publicized Dr. Carpenter's Twitter account, which is @EquitySuit1. So if you haven't checked it out, I advise you to follow it. We conducted a crisis communications training for all administrators in July of last year, or no, I guess, of this year, 2017, and we launched a new district mobile app. If you haven't checked out the app, you should. Our technology department did a great job, and they even involved some of our MIC interns on development of that app, which is pretty cool. Some things that are underway are we're planning for a website update, which is a little bit overdue, but I think we'll have it out in the next few weeks. And I think this is important to continue and enhance what we do every day, and that's kind of our go-to media releases, our website, our social media, which we have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We have two weekly electronic newsletters, one's our staff newsletter and one is our community newsletter. Five times a year, everyone in the district, whether they have a business or a home address, gets in our school's community newspaper, bulk mail to them. And we're going to continue our YouTube channel, which we started several years ago, but which we've really got active with this year. We're also continuing to work with our Citizens Advisory Committee, PTA Council, and Business Roundtable. And Citizens Advisory Committee just started having some social media discussions on how they can help us enhance our social media. And I see a lot of principals in the audience tonight. I want to thank you and your teachers because you are the heart and soul of our communications because what you all do as far as communicating to your parents and your families and your kids is really, I think, the most important thing we do. So that will continue, and you always do a great job on that. Also, an underway video efforts, this is one of the most exciting things we've done for a while, is Shawn Harrell is a teacher at Summit Technology Academy, and he now is working about four or five hours a week on videos for us. And he's done an awesome job already. He's talented, he's creative, and one thing he's helped us do is launch the R7 Equity Minute. Some of you have hopefully seen it, but in case you haven't, it's only a minute, so I'm going to go ahead and play it right now.
I went into education because of the kids. They make me smile, and they keep me young. Students need to believe that they can learn. Teaching students how to learn is more important than the content I teach. I appreciate the quality of education that the district expects and provides, but I do think it's critical and only fair to provide the same curriculum to all students at the highest level. I set my expectations high for all students and, of course, provide scaffolding for all students. I value education in all of its forms. I've spent the last several years working on my doctorate, and I'm nearly finished writing my dissertation. Soon, I hope to travel and spend time with family that's needed. I also like to play board games. I collect and paint toy soldiers. I enjoy learning and reading, especially nonfiction. I want my students to know that I'll work with them to develop the tools and skills to be successful as a lifelong learner. Always dream and ask questions, believe in themselves, and know that they already know so much and that they're capable of doing anything. I also want them to know that as an educator and as a teacher, I am a professional. My name is Dwayne Fleck, and this is my R7 Equity Minute.
And thanks to Dwayne for being our very first... Uh-oh, Amy, did I... Did I escape? Nope. Close that window, thank you. And... There we go. Video efforts, like I said, Shawn has done a great job, and we're going to show you a highlight reel that he created for you in just a minute. And if you look to the back of the room, you'll see cinematic visions. We renewed our agreement with them, so they are going to videotape our regular board monthly meetings the rest of the year and also have done a great job. So I'm going to show you one more highlight reel that's also a minute. We're very into things that last a minute or less because we all know what kind of attention spans we have. All right, and Bradster Peace Theater is about Brad Rakers, our Teacher of the Year, so... Right. Close the window, okay. I'll learn that by the third video, which... For our next steps, we're in the planning discussion stage for some type of a coffee with the superintendent event next semester. We haven't really got dates yet, but that's exciting. Superintendent's blog for next semester, and we're planning for a 2018-19 communications audit, which would be a review from an outside consultant of all our communications. It's been seven years since we did an audit, it seems like yesterday, but about every five to 10 years is when they're recommended. So that's another thing in the planning stage, and we're continuing to work with Teamly Summit with the help of Dr. Miller over there on a communications plan that we started last year to just get them information in short bites and more ways. So that is my whole presentation, so I'd be glad to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Does anyone have any questions for Janice? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate Ms. Phelan, as well as the rest of our leadership team, in terms of the work they're doing to operationalize the board's priorities. It seems like just yesterday, these were established during the month of June, and to see the level of progress being made is reassuring in terms of our work and for the young people I see seated here in the front rows makes me proud. Thank you, Ms. Phelan. Okay, I saw Don Andrews in the back. Is he still here? He still here? So when I saw Don Andrews, he told me that he was going to travel the world and really enhance his social life when he retired from the district. And so I went back tonight, and I said, "Don, why are you here?" And he said, "To hear your 100-day report." So needless to say, he's failing at retirement if this suffices for his social time. He's failing at retirement. Good to see you, sir. So during the past 130-some-odd days, I've had the opportunity to really engage and begin my tenure here as your school district superintendent. And I would tell you during that time, I've really tested my stamina in terms of looking, listening, and learning. I told the principals this morning that my natural inclination is to be a doer and to roll sleeves up and start doing some things. But you can't enter into a new community and just start doing things, right? So I would tell you that my natural talent is to do, but over the course of my career, I've developed the skill to look, listen, and observe more, and it really served me well during these last several months. But man, am I glad it's over. Because we get to do some things now that I believe will greatly, greatly enhance the learning and lives of young people who are already privileged in terms of residing in what I believe to be the best school district in our metropolitan area. And I say that unapologetically. We are the best school district in our metropolitan area. But after the first 100 days, I've really had an opportunity to really, really internalize the strengths of the district, to really, really look at what might be some immediate opportunities for the district, some short-term opportunities, and some things that we really need to look at on the horizon. And I wish I could tell you that I did that all alone. I didn't. I really engaged with community and various stakeholders and individuals here in this room to really get a comprehensive or holistic look at the educational ecosystem here in LSR7. So let's talk a little bit about that. Okay, I got it. There we go. What were the inputs that went into this document? This is a document that will be available to all of you at the end of the meeting as soon as we complete this presentation. It's available, of course, to our school board members, and it goes into greater detail than I will go into this evening. Our goal, we ordered 500 of these, and to be quite honest with you, my goal is to have to order more by the end of next week because there are lots of involved stakeholders in our community, but given life circumstances, maybe working downtown, making their way back, we may not see them day-to-day, but they bring to us each day their most precious resource. So they too deserve to have this in their hands in terms of what the superintendent anticipates. So what are the inputs? At least two school visits to all LSR7 school buildings. There's not a building in the district that I have not been in at least twice already. And meeting with more than 500 community members and district staff members. Meetings with formalized groups at our community, the Citizens Advisory Committee, Business Roundtable, PTA Presidents, Economic Development, Educational Foundation, Chamber, Rotary Club, Retired Teachers Association. We've been engaging with all of those groups. And I've also had the opportunity to speak at various events in terms of getting to know this new guy, what's his motivation, what are his drivers. Those presentations have been posted online. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to see those. And I wish I could tell you all of the community events. We have lots of events in our community, and that speaks to the quality of community that we have, but participated in numerous, numerous community events. So in part, my young people on the front, they may embrace this, but this is a Wordle. So I don't know how many of the persons my age and older know a lot about a Wordle. But the way this thing works is we look at various questions or we look at outputs, and when you look at the words here, here are the words, they get larger the more they show up, and then we produce this document. So overall, community sentiments about the district, here are the words that showed up a lot. Everyone I spoke with had very, very positive things to say about the quality of our staff. You see, that word is large. The school district being the heart of the community, that's a big deal to lots of people. We bring the best students to the door, better than most districts, that's kind of what I hear loud and clear from our community. And I also heard community members speak of their individual volunteering in the service that they've put in to better the district. Lots of support, so that word "support" came up a lot in terms of community overall sentiments of the district. I said to our principals this morning that there are strong metropolitan areas across this country that would just really, really love to have the strengths that we have in our community, and I'll build upon that here in a little bit. Here was an interesting sentiment. This quote stuck with me because you generally don't hear this a lot. I had an individual in the community say to me, "If you share your challenges with us, Dr. Carpenter, we're more than willing to help you in meeting them." And he framed that in the context of, "There's lots of good news in the district, and when I hear from the district, it's always the positive." But I'm a business leader in this community, so I get to move around the community and I get to see some things that I just get to see in my day-to-day walk. And there are some kids that aren't participating in those huge successes. And as a lifelong Lee Summit resident and as a community member, I want to know that from the district because I want to lend my support in that area. So that quote really, really resonates with me from a particular individual. I'm going to have to challenge myself again here today. I promised everyone who engaged with me and gave me the opportunity to interview them that I would not identify them individually. So man, I want to say this guy's name, but I can't do it. So we also got into a very, very sophisticated conversation with lots of stakeholders about what are the issues facing our community? What are those issues that we must face as we move forward as a community? And again, I heard the word "diversity" a lot. We're changing as a community, and are we ready to embrace that and really, really utilize it as the asset that it is? Those are my words. But diversity, growth, we hear a lot about schools and give it up for First Year Principal David Mitchell, but Summit Lakes is getting a little crowded, huh? Yeah, so we hear a lot about growth, and is the district ready to embrace that growth and make some facility-type decisions? The word "trust" came up a lot, and then you had words like "community," "listening to the kids' needs," do we really, really listen to kids in terms of what we're putting forth as an institution? That came up a lot. That word "trust," I'm just going to park there for a second and say that I have an idea. It may be all wrong. I think that word came up a lot just based on the proximity of the district to one occurrence that kind of took on a life of its own in the district. My guess is if we did this three years from now, diversity might still come up, growth might still come up, community listening to kids might still come up, maybe "trust" wouldn't. I would hope that that would be our future, our future story. And then I really wanted to know from some individuals, what are your expectations of yours truly? So as a new superintendent, new community member, what are your expectations of me? Big ideas with visibility, being visible, transparency, being a part of the community, enhancing and building upon our tradition of excellence, all of which is positive. So when you hear these things, you're saying, "What can be wrong there?" But there is some pull and tug in some of this that we'll talk about as we move through the presentation. Based on all of the conversations, all of the listening, all of the visits, I developed what I believe to be the strengths of the school district, and there's greater detail in this report. But these are strengths, again, I'd say that even in some of our suburban communities, many of them would want to have these strengths. What are our strengths as a district? Through my eyes, they're talented, skillful, dedicated staff members. They are students that come to school prepared to learn each and every day. Average household income well over $70,000, close to $80,000. Average home price well over $191,000. By and large, when that's your story, students come to school very prepared to learn. High levels of parent involvement. My goodness, there's some data points that I don't want to bore you all with. The data points, I want you to read it, but 99% of students were registered with all records ready to go first day of school. I can tell you I have a part of my not-so-distant past in which that number was in the 40s. And registration just took place days and days and days after the start of the school year. What an opportunity to build upon for young people. Excellent curricular resources and course and program offerings, robust courses. We have this course selection process, and if it makes it through the rigor of that process, the young people in here will get a new course. Lots of courses, lots of opportunities. That's very, very positive, but also there's some work that we do when we create that type of environment that I also want to talk about. Salary and benefits package of our employees, I think our beginning teacher salary is about second place in the region. I think if you get into the middle of our scale, we're about fourth place in the region. And although there's no clear way to quantify the benefits package, second to none, second to none. Operations and facilities, even prior to serving as your superintendent, I know that in the operations area, there are districts all around us that wait to see what Lee Summit is doing operationally. What type of HVAC units are they buying? I see they've gone to those compressed natural gas buses. Let's see how that's working. So we lead the way in that area of operations. And the financial position of the district is just strong, strong, strong financial position. Back during the years of cost containment, those who were around during '08 and '09, you saw the district experience some cuts, cost containment because of the economy. And at that time, the board agreed that it would not have a fund balance below 15%. And right now, we're somewhere around almost 30% in terms of the reserves that we have on hand to do our work. That's a signal of a strong financial position. We also have our local tax digest that went up by 6.5% this past year. So, and a lot of that has to do with continual new construction. That's very, very important, and that signals, again, a strong financial position for the school district. So many communities would really, really want to have this level of strength. That has a lot to do with the forethought of many who came before me. That has to do with the individuals around this dais, and that has to do with the leadership across the district. So as I look at the strengths and I listen to the commentary across the district, we get to this area of, "What are some of the superintendent's immediate commitments? What are some of his immediate commitments?" Those of you who've had an opportunity to engage with me know that I bring to this conversation this whole notion of equity and giving students everything they need in a given situation, realizing that that might be different for one student to another and it might be different for one school to another. That's extremely important to me and something that I will go to my rocking chair doing on behalf of young people. With that being said, the community has a tradition of excellence, but you remember that word "diversity," you remember that word "growth," and you remember that commentary that the superintendent put forth about what does it take to remain the best during our back-to-school kickoff. And I tend to believe that this culture of excellence has to be braided with equity as we change as a community, and I'll talk more about that. So immediate commitments, increased learning and achievement of every single child. We have this mission statement that we prepare each student for success in life. But as I really, really look at the data and I really look at where we are, we do that well with the vast majority of our young people. But there are some young people in our district that are not participating in that mission statement. They're small in number, just look at the free and reduced lunch percentage, the smallest of any of the Big Five districts in our metropolitan area. So this week, they're masked, those students are masked in a 98.2% APR report. Put another way, we're touting, because it's important, that the state has an annual performance report. On a scale of 100, we're showing up at 98.2 on that scale. Very exciting. We should give ourselves a round of applause. But as we honor that, we also honor the fact that in all of the areas in which we could attain points, the only area in which we did not receive max points was the area of subgroup performance. That's why we ended up at 98.2 because we have students in various subgroups, whether it be a racial subgroup, whether it be an economic status subgroup, whether it be a special education subgroup, that are not participating in that statement. And that's something that if you have a heart for young people, should concern you. So addressing disparities and inequities to better serve all students and really, really get into a point where we compare more favorably in Kansas City to the other Big Five districts. So here it is. Anytime a district like Lee Summit gets a data point, the first thing we want to do is we want to look at the North Kansas Cities, the Blue Springs, the Park Hills, and the Liberties of the world. That's our comparison group. You probably hear that in your social circles. And if you look at those groups of kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch in the district, we have the lowest percentage of said kids. And we know with that, learning is not unattainable, but it does bring with it some additional challenge. Well, look at North Kansas City. About half of their population falls into that category. If you look at Blue Springs, 10% more than our district. So then we start to grapple with, how does our performance compare with these districts? You'll get your book lit, you'll be able to digest this a little bit, but this is an important slide to me and one that I'm really, really sharing with our leadership as we talk about how do we start to compare more favorably in the Big Five. So if you look on the left, that's the ranking, 1 through 5. And if you look across the top, that's various groups of students. That's the all-students category, the free and reduced lunch student category, EIP students, students with an EIP plan, ELL students, white students, black students, Hispanic students. So if you look at state summative assessments, tests that we do for the state of Missouri at the end of the year, there are 57 ranking opportunities for us to compare ourselves to the Big Five. And when you look at this data, it shows that we have the strongest clientele of the group. So when we look at the all-students category, in 57 opportunities, we only rank 1 or 2 in 15 of those categories. And we rank 4 or 5 in 26 of those categories. When we look at our free and reduced lunch students, in 30 out of 57 instances, we rank fourth or fifth. When we look at our, let's just look at any of them, our ELL students, in 20 cases, we rank first or second. When you look at our white students, 27 instances, we're fourth or fifth out of 57. Looking at our black students, you see where we are there, and also with our Hispanic students. So a goal of mine is to enhance that ranking for our district. Our kids deserve it, our community deserves it. But let's talk a little bit about how we do that, Board members. I don't believe we do that through drill and kill and more test prep. I believe that that can be done through innovation. I believe that that can be done through more rigorous learning. I believe that that can be done through greater access for all students to highly rigorous courses. I don't think it's done through more drill and kill. So let's be clear about that. And when we do that well for a population of students who come to school by and large prepared to learn, we're going to show up 1 in 2 in all categories. Little more information about that in your report that you'll get a chance to digest. Immediate commitments continued. Enhancing workforce... Enhancing workforce development and access to college courses for all students. So I'm spending a lot of time with the Lee Summit business community and here's what I'm hearing. We're not getting the raw material graduating from schools we need to compete and be a part of the workforce of the future. So how do we get more students prepared? How do we get more students participating in programs that are somewhat similar to STA and MIC? How do we do that? How do we create a clientele of students that are ready to go on to a four-year college if they choose, go on to two-year if they choose, or go directly into workforce with some industry-recognized credential? And we all know now that those high-wage, high-paying jobs that many of our parents and many of us were able to get with no high school diploma. I have an uncle. Significant, no high school diploma. Those folks are baby boomers, they're exiting. But as they exit, here's the opportunity, they're going to be replaced, but they're not going to be replaced with another person that doesn't have a high school diploma. They're going to be replaced with a highly skilled young person. So how do we create systems and create the conditions to allow our students to separate themselves from other students in this metropolitan area? Whether they're going on to college or whether they're going directly into that space to participate in the world of work. Further define twenty-first century classrooms, that's an immediate commitment. It doesn't take a minute to walk through the MIC campus, our forty-million-dollar plant there that's serving some of our most highly specialized young people, to say, man, what would happen if all students had learning spaces like this? What could we do to change the trajectory of all of our students if they were privileged enough to have those types of learning spaces? That's important in the name of equity. And then we also need to address facility needs in terms of when do we respond to population growth and build new schools? Or when did we improve upon or build upon existing schools? Those are some questions that we don't need to be reactive in answering. We need to be proactive in answering and that's something that we're committed to by way of Dr. Hedrick's work on priority number two. And that notion that you heard about tonight of strengthening public trust, again, we build upon that in the report. So when we hear about a community that's growing and a community that's changing, there's this perception that it's happening at this fast, fast space pace. But the data does not support that. The data shows us that it's happening at a very manageable pace. So if it's manageable, the question becomes, do we have the will to put systems in place so that we'll never be a district that just gets overtaken by changes in population? Put another way, we should become proficient with our nineteen point two percent. And we should be able to create systems for our nineteen point two percent so that when it becomes twenty-two percent, we plug students into that system. We already know it works, it's already tried and true. Now, if you are growing and your free and reduced lunch or your demographics were changing by thirty, forty, fifty percent a year, it could get pretty hard to keep up with. But the data does not show us that that's happening. So we have an opportunity to again be proactive and get ahead of that curve. Another thing we hear a lot about now, and I wanted to look at the data because I simply don't believe in making things up, but we hear about our students just coming to school with more challenges than they ever have. And I would just suggest to you that our data supports that notion. Kids are coming to school with many, many challenges. And I have to pause as superintendent to think about what role do we play in those challenges as a superintendent? I've been fortunate over the course of my career as I look at this number and say, two thousand students were showing up with various mental health diagnoses, thirteen, fourteen, and a short four years later, that's up by four hundred students. I've been fortunate enough to engage with lots of people who are a lot smarter than me over the course of my career. And one that comes to mind is Dr. Sidney Moss, who's the Global Directive STEM Initiatives for Discovery Education. I know all of you've heard of the Discovery Channel. But she interacts around this notion of project-based learning and STEM education across the globe. And when I had an opportunity to learn at her feet, she talked about a conversation she had with the lead education official in Finland. And if you go and look at Finland and you look at this international assessment that's called PISA, generally Finland shows up number one on that international assessment in terms of students in their learning. If you dig deeper, you can come up with some other reasons aside from what they do academic that might play into it, but say what we wish, they're number one. And she was working with them because over the course of a couple of years, they saw a little bit of a dip in their results. And they called her in to talk about what was going on. This is her story to me. And she said after a sophisticated presentation of about an hour, the lead education official looked up for the country and said, this is simple. We've gotten away from what makes us who we are. We just need our students to start playing more. We stopped and they're not playing enough. So I think about that in terms of highly engaging opportunities, in terms of solving real-world problems and in terms of project-based learning. When you see it at work, it looks like play. But it's a lot higher level of learning than working through a worksheet. So when I think about these numbers, I also think about how much have we done to diminish those types of opportunities for for young people? Ongoing short-term commitments, equity-focused schooling that maximizes key opportunities to tightly couple the work of the district with schools. It's interesting because when you talk with a lot of people, you hear a lot of the history of the district. And so I totally come in peace, but here's what I hear relative to the history. We've really, really centered over time, based on what I've heard, this whole notion of building level autonomy. Put another way, each principal and each school staff being the captain of their ship. But I don't believe in making things up. There are opportunities for that, but around big goals and big ideas, the research tells us that we should be more tightly coupled as a district and as a school. With that being said, are we missing some opportunities to be more tightly aligned with our schools in the area of curriculum, instruction and assessment? Put another way, what we do with young people and how we make sure it's happening for them? I think there's some opportunity there that we need to look at in the short term. A comprehensive formative assessment program. Put another way, we don't need to wait until May or June, and this year, when was it, almost September, to look at when the state tells us if a kid hit or missed the mark. There's some things that we should do real-time in our district to look at the performance of every child and create real-time safety nets and enrichments when they're necessary. And I think that's a great opportunity in the short term for our district. Opportunity gaps among various subgroups, I'm going to build on that a little bit. We have some clear gaps that we need to be willing to address, even as we sit with a ninety-eight point two APR. Suspension rates in terms of gender, family income and ethnic groups. I've been really looking at our students who we see a gap in terms of their performance. And then I'm looking at, I'm overlaying that with, how do we discipline those students? And is that discipline an outlier? And we're going to look at that a little bit also. Critique the district's current continuous improvement process to ensure that we're agile enough to meet the needs of the twenty-first century learner. I've been an educator for twenty-two years now. And I would tell you that we're some of the best fellow educators at creating processes. We can create processes with the best of them. And sometimes it becomes more about the process than about the problem we're trying to solve. And if we get bogged down in the process and we're not agile enough to adjust and change for our students in real time, we have cohorts of students who are leaving the organization and we haven't given them what our best, what we know our best to be. You know, Asa Hily talks about this notion of, we already know what's best for students. The question is, how do we feel about the fact that we have not done it yet? We already know what those things are. But how do we feel about the fact when we have data points telling us that it's not happening? So I believe we need to be more agile. We're working on some pieces now in partnership with UCM and MCC around innovations track. And I was over at Lee Summit North, maybe some of the ladies in the audience today were there. Who's in this, who's with Speech and Debate? Okay, so I was spending some time with the crew from Speech and Debate. And I talked with some of them about this whole notion of, if there was a way to complete some of your Gen Ed courses during your high school experience, and maybe you can get thirty of those credits and forego one year of college when you arrive on campus, would you delve into that? I just saw a little head start nodding right now. There's a head nodding. And by and large, they were saying, yes, why don't we do that? I said, well, we do some things with MIC and STA. Well, I'm going to be a lawyer, I'm going to major in business and those highly specialized tracks are the tracks for me. So some of that, in addition to some preliminary conversations, started spitting our conversation relative to, how can we put something like this in place with our, for our students in conjunction with MCC and UCM, who are already key, key partners in our district? And then we started looking at internal processes, our school improvement, continuous improvement model. Then we started looking at dates that we've socially constructed. And we said, if we follow our current processes, that's going to take us about eighteen months. If that were to take us eighteen months, count out this year's juniors and count out, count out this year's sophomores and count out this year's juniors. When the workforce is telling us that we can't meet that demand for them fast enough. So there are districts around us that have found out how to be more agile. And I think that's an opportunity for us to be more agile when we know some of the right things to do for for young people. When I talked about this whole notion of gaps, this is one of the key gaps. When you look at our ACT and we know that this has implications for how we set up student on his or her pathway to college and the like. When you look at the state of Missouri, we surpassed them. I think they're somewhere around twenty-one percent or something for the state and we're at twenty-three point two when you look at that composite there. But I want you to look at that data over time. And when you look at that data over time, there's a clear gap between our largest two groups of students. And it didn't just show up one year. That gap has persisted over time. It's persisted over time. So in a district in which we talk about preparing each student for success in life, we have to grapple with this gap. And talk about why it persists in our district over time. That's like super important. It's important for the young people in this room today and those who are coming this way. So that's just interesting to me when I see the persistence of that gap over time between our all students, between our white students and our black students. When I look at all of those student groups, lest we believe that one group is educationally inferior, then there's something inherent in what we do that we need to grapple with. So I think about access to rigorous curriculum and I think about all of those things that we get the opportunity to work with to enhance that number. This is a little hard to see and you're going to get your booklet. But this is when I overlay what's going on academically with what's going on on the discipline front in our district. So I took two years. I simply took last year, sixteen seventeen, and then I just said, okay, give me a couple of years back, give me fourteen fifteen. And so when we look at fourteen fifteen and we look at sixteen seventeen, there's not a lot about these charts that's different. Eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-nine students in fourteen fifteen, eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one in sixteen seventeen. When you look at that timeframe, in fourteen fifteen, we had five thousand one hundred and eighteen total days for suspension, whether that be in school, out of school. And in sixteen seventeen, that number was five thousand and nine. Pretty similar. And when you look at that timeframe, male students made up about half of the students in our district and female students made up about half of the students in our district both years. But when we look at the students who are participating, girls in the suspensions at the higher rate, it's the males. They're half of the population and they represent about seventy-four point seven percent of the suspensions. Girls may just say, we just behave better. Not going to let you off that easy, girls. Yeah, so that's something that we grapple with. And then we look at those other pieces where we talk about those gaps between our free and reduced lunch students and some of our kids of color, we look at that. Let's just look at sixteen seventeen. Free and reduced lunch students made up about twenty-one percent of our total school district population. But they made up fifty-seven point eight percent of all of our suspensions. What does that mean? Why does that happen? What are the disconnects that cause that to happen? Those are issues that a district that talks about all students must grapple with. We must grapple with. When I think about African-American or black students in our district, they make up about twelve point five percent of the population. But they're almost three times that number participating in the suspensions at a rate of about thirty-three point three percent. What causes that to happen? When they only make up twelve and a half percent of the population? Those are issues that I believe as a district, our students deserve our grappling with those issues. And here's what I believe I've learned over the course of my career when I think about these types of numbers. And when I think about these types of numbers, the first thing that an educator like myself who likes to roll up his sleeves and do something, the first thing that I do is I say, what do we need to do? Let's start doing it right now. Because I'm trying to influence that result. Good person, good intentions, I want to influence that result, so I'm going to get started right away. And then that fits pretty neatly in my stacks. If I do this this month and I do that next month and I train this group and I move that group, something's going to change. But what we're finding is that's not happening. The issue still persists. And I believe that there's some messier work that would get us to a different place when we start to grapple with beliefs. And what are the beliefs that are driving our behaviors that are getting us to our results? And how do we really, really start to have meaningful conversations about our beliefs when when certain students stand before us? Our belief when a child comes to school not prepared, when eighty percent of our students do. And how do we respond to that? And I think that's a messier conversation, but I think it can get us to the point of influencing our results. And that's promising, but that's the work and that's difficult work. And we're starting some of that even as I speak. Ongoing short-term commitments, systemically interrupting those district barriers to access to those rigorous courses and programs and being able to take those things to scale. Put another way, the handful of students who participate in IV IB in comparison to our total number of students and the handful that participate in MIC and STA, although they're very important and they're doing meaningful work, absolutely they are. But how do we take those things to scale so more kids can participate? Maybe they just become less highly specialized. Maybe we examine some of the entry requirements and realize that some of the entry requirements that we're putting forth are keeping out the very kids who need to be a part of it. I had a young lady tell me I didn't sign up for MIC because when they came in and discussed it with my school, they talked about internships and having to have the opportunity to provide my own transportation for an internship. And the young lady said, I didn't have that, so I just didn't participate. Well, as a district, we should grapple with that. We should be calling the Judy Hedricks of the world and say, let's figure this out. Because we have young people that are not participating because of their personal life circumstance. And how can that be okay? In a place called public school. So that's something for us to to work with. Just forging this culture of equity-focused decision-making. Put another way, sounds like equal, but really it's not. And if you go back here, that has to do with our workforce and some of the action that the board was taking prior to my arrival that I support one hundred percent. But it's not robbery to any kid to expect to come to school and experience a workforce that mirrors the student population. We think that's very important and I have to say that unapologetically, I believe that to be important. So let's look at our student population and how it compares with our teaching population. When we look at our student population, we know that half of our students are male and half of our students are female by and large. But we only have about twenty percent of our teaching population that are male. What can we do to be intentional about influencing that? Intentional. We also know that seventy-five percent of our students are white, twelve percent are black, four percent are Hispanic, three percent are Asian and about five percent are multi-ethnic or mixed-race students. So we think about seventy-five percent of our students being white, ninety-six point So we think about 75% of our students being white, 96.9% of our teachers are white. So that means some of the other groups we talked about aren't experiencing teachers that look like them to any degree. And there's a lot of research out there that talks about that being important when all things and all credentials are the same. So we should grapple with that. And Dr. Miller would tell you that he's been working on it and he has. He's talked to our folks about it, have building leaders who talk about it. But I would argue that in order to influence that, we're gonna have to put our practices under a microscope. And that's an opportunity that rests in those data. Targeted recruitment is a part of it. Developing strategies to ensure that the superintendent provides instructional leadership within the organization to implement strategies district-wide, that's important. When you talk about the community wanting the superintendent to be very visible, I believe that that's extremely important. But I also believe that there are times when I sacrifice being in a meeting upstairs with the folks in curriculum and leadership to be present in a community space. And I think over time, we're gonna have to figure out other ways to get that accomplished because the research is clear. If you don't believe me, listen to Mike Smoker, listen to Bob Marzano. And they both would tell you that the superintendent should be providing direct instructional leadership in the school district. So we balance that and that's an opportunity to balance that work and that's on me. Long-term commitments. One thing that I believe is very important in our district is we have the floor of our district and we have the ceiling. And we must raise the floor and the ceiling simultaneously. But I think our data and our performance tells us that we must accelerate the raising of the floor. I think our kids deserve that. And that's how we maintain, in terms of my long-term commitment, the district's tradition of excellence. Working with other governmental entities, I think we've gotten off on a good, with a good start there to address issues of growth. All those facility issues, they're gonna be a part of a growing community over time. You know, there's an application that went to Amazon the other day from the Kansas City region. And in that region, regional application, there were six sites that said if Amazon wanted to come to the Kansas City region, here are the six best sites we have. Lee Summit was one of the six of the entire metropolitan area on both sides of the state line. If that were to happen, we'd grow by leaps and bounds. So how do we address the issues related to that in a proactive manner? That is your workforce. I hope you see it coming up and coming up and coming up. Enhancing support and maintaining our robust digital environment. Our Connect to Learn program is second to none. I think our challenge is really, really making certain that we place our curricular resources in that environment and it just becomes a part of what kids do in every single class every single day. Merging those curriculum resources into that environment and focusing on equity in all areas. And of course, we talked about performance and subgroups. Extremely, extremely important. So I was over one day. Everybody's laughing already, you haven't seen anything yet. So I was over one day at Great Beginning, Great Beginnings and had an opportunity to engage with the building principal and engage with staff. And then they took me outside to the playground. And when they took me outside to the playground, these kids are having a blast. By the way, we have the best playgrounds I've ever seen across the district, second to none. And that's super important. Remember what we said about, we just didn't play enough. So we have the playgrounds to do it. So over at Great Beginnings, there's this little fella here. And he tells me, he says, I wanna ride you on my track. I wanna ride you on my tricycle. I was like, you can't ride me on that thing, no, you'll hurt yourself. You, you'll get hurt if you try and do that. No, I wanna do it, I wanna do it. I was like, you can't do that, son, you're gonna hurt yourself. I had good intentions. My intentions were very good. But in my own way, I was dictating to this young person what he needed to do versus listening and honoring his voice. And I had great intentions when I was doing it. And so as I was processing through that, I thought about access to rigorous courses. And are there some things that we do that coach kids in different directions? With good intentions, I might add. With good intentions. And what would happen if we let that child in and do what Mr. Fleck just said on the video? I expect the most out of him, but if you heard him loud and clear, he said, I also scaffold. Put another way, I give them what they need and that's equity in that environment for them to be successful. So we thought about this thing and yours truly got on the back of it. And I whispered some coaching in his ear and you see, I couldn't do it alone. So there's a teacher who came along to assist us. Put another way, as I look at this plan, I can't do this alone. I'm gonna need many of you out there in that audience to come along with me to do this very, very important work. But when that happened, when I did some coaching, when she did some assisting, the teacher there. Start this thing up and let's see what happens. And if we fall over, we get back up and try again. Yes, because we're gonna try some things new for young people. And we might have to try again, right? Yeah. So there he is. He has this little boy and I'm telling him, that's all you can do. Stop saying you want to do me. That's the best you can do. And then finally, I bought in. I listened to his voice and I got a little help. Look at there, we struggled in the beginning. We struggled. But he did more than I ever thought he could do when I gave him the opportunity. And guess what? We almost went off the road and guess what I did? I scaffolded. I pulled us back on. I pulled us back on. You know, and when I looked at that thing, that's exactly what I'm talking about in this 100-day plan. That's exactly what I'm talking about in this 100-day plan. Had an opportunity to learn from this guy a few weeks ago at the National Center for Educational Research and Technology. George Kuroz, and he gets it. Has this new book and it's flying off the shelves in educational circles and it's called The Innovator's Mindset. And he really challenges us to stop graduating children from some of the best school districts in the country. And when kids graduate, the only thing they know how to do well is school. And he challenges us to be more innovative with our young people and how that's a demand. Because our students don't benefit if the only thing they know when they leave is school. So how do we become more creative and more innovative in our approaches? And here's what George challenged us with when he ended his presentation to a group of about 75 superintendents from across the country. He said, the biggest barrier to innovation is our own way of thinking. And you can stay in that space and keep that way of thinking, but just know that someone, somewhere is doing exactly what you're saying can't be done. That's our opportunity, that's our challenge, that's what this report is all about. Give the board members their reports and let's put them back there, Ms. Phelan, and let's let people start to digest them. And we'll put them all over this community and we'll continue to do this work so that we become the model of suburban education for this country. There's nothing about the resources we have at our disposal that tells us we shouldn't be. The only thing is how do we feel about the fact that we might not be that right now? That's our opportunity. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
That was, uh, that was an interesting report that gives us an awful lot to think about and to, to work towards. And I look forward to the work that we're gonna be doing to, to get to that point across the board. I hope our principals who are here tonight also feel the same way. It's a, it's a challenge, uh, yet it is a wonderful opportunity for us to realize our potential fully, which I'm not sure that we, we always do. We're, we're good, but we could be great. The next part of our agenda is some presentations and recognitions that I know some of you have been waiting anxiously for. And we'll get started with that with American Education Week. Almost a century ago, American Education Week began as a way to raise public awareness to the importance of education. The first celebration of our nation's public schools took place in 1921 during a time when close to 25% of World War I draftees were illiterate. Did you, did you hear that word, illiterate? That means they could not read. Since then, it's a special week, has become a time to recognize our schools' enormous impact on students and families throughout our nation's history, today and in the future. Within Lee Summit, our schools are recognized, are considered one of the most valued resources. Our quality school system is a major reason new residents move to our community and is a significant draw for businesses and industry. As has been the case for decades, the strength of our schools and success of our students is a direct result of the work of our outstanding employees. On November 16th, Board of Education meeting, the following excellence in teaching recipients will be representing all staff members during a brief recognition of American Education Week. On behalf of the entire community, thank you for the difference you make each day for our students. Our representatives are Pam Haynes from Longview Farm Elementary, first grade teacher; Kim Hartman, Woodland Elementary Special Education; Mindy Hayspire, Lee Summit North High School English Teacher; Kim Ruiz, Lee Summit Point Elementary Library Media Specialist; Jonathan Crinkie, Lee Summit North High School Music Teacher. Our second recognition is National Educational Support Professionals Day. Annually observed on Wednesday during American Education Week, National Educational Support Professionals Day honors the contributions of school support employees. Our district paraprofessionals, building clerks, resource aides make a tremendous difference in terms of student achievement as well as employee productivity. Through National Education Support Professionals Day, we recognize the individuals working behind the scenes to ensure that our students and your colleagues have the resources that they need to succeed. At the board meeting, April Koch, paraprofessional at Hawthorne Hill Elementary, will be representing support paraprofessionals throughout the Lee Summit R7 District during special recognition. We're now going to recognize the National Coach of the Year for Cross Country and Track, Coach Jesse Griffin. Coach Griffin's the track coach at Lee Summit West. Girls' track and field team made history this spring by setting an all-class record scoring 109 points to win a second consecutive state title. The point total record is regardless of gender or classification, for those who don't know what classification is, our state has broken up to, I believe, six different classes of schools from very, very, very small to really, really big. Uh, so that doesn't, that has no bearing on the point total that they have. Uh, point total record, or the title marks the fourth state championship in school history. The Lady Titans had all-state athletes in 16 out of 19 events for a total of 29 medals. Also an all-time state record regardless of gender or class. Mr. Griffin teaches math at West and is the head girls' cross-country and track and field coach. Again, let's give him a big hand. And I can add, I can attest that having been a girls' track coach for 18 years myself with a few participants here on the board, Dias, who were on my team, I never did that.
It was the talent.
I, it may have been the coaching. The next is kind of a repeat performance for like every year. I'm beginning to feel like we ought to just have this recorded and just play it. The state champion, Lee Summit North Cheerleaders. The team practiced for months to perfect their three-minute routine that they performed for the judges, including early mornings and weekend practices. With our cheerleading season beginning being year-round, it's incredible to see the dedication and commitment these athletes put into this program. The cheer program now holds a total of seven state championships. And our final recognition is the state swim champions from Lee Summit North High School. Liam Brissette, a senior at Lee Summit North, finished his season by breaking his own state record in the 200-yard freestyle with a time of 1 minute 37 seconds, 37.4 seconds, as well as setting the, the, uh, class-two swimming record for the event. He broke the 10-year-old record in 100-yard freestyle state record with a time of 44.56, which also gives him the class-two record for this event. This adds to Liam's already existing 500-yard freestyle record, giving him a total of three individual state records, two class records, and over three school records. Daniel Worth, a freshman at North, took the top spot in the 100 meter, 100-meter, 100-yard breaststroke at state with a time of 57:07, earning him a first state title win, as well as taking the class-two record for the breaststroke and setting a new school record. The 200-yard medley team, medley relay team made up of Grant Goddard, Lance Goddard, Daniel Worth, and Liam Brissette won the finals time, with a finals time of 1.3, 1 minute 34 seconds .96. This relay helped to push this year's swim team to a third-place finish with only six total swimmers. Each member of the team had to master their individual stroke to win this event and not only place first, but set a class-two record. So good job, guys.
Mr. President, before we move on, I just want to also add to the swim team. We want to thank Coach Ray for his service. And I didn't get a chance to meet the young men the other night at the banquet, but it's a great little group. And all the students here on here tonight have done a great job representing the district.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Clark. It is time for comments from the public. Lynda, do we have anyone?
We do not have any public comments, but I would ask the board to hit the F5 button on their computer to refresh since we amended the agenda.
At this point in our agenda, it's time for our board reports or meetings attended. Each meeting, we have an opportunity for our board members to report on the things that they've been doing outside in the community. And for those of you who... And for those of you who need to be other places, now might be a really good time for you to be there. So, you won't offend us if you leave.
Ms. Opie, happy birthday, good night, bye-bye.[612.66][612.66][laughter]
It's her birthday.
That's right, I knew that, I was gonna say that.[616.54][616.54][laughter] Any other administrators who are having a birthday today, that's too bad.[623.66][623.66][laughter] I definitely recall having to sit through about 5,000 board meetings as an administrator because we had to.[634.25][634.25][laughter] You guys are really lucky.[636.54][636.54][laughter] Right, Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry.[639.54][639.54][laughter]
He wasn't paying attention about sitting through board meetings as an administrator.
I've had to see several principals who are here that need to stay here.[649.41][649.41][laughter]
We don't want to be intentionally cruel.
Yeah.
Now, we're to the business part of our meeting, the, well, our board reports and meetings attended, so we'll just start down on Ms. Clark, on your end, and we'll go through and see what we have going on this time.
All right, in my responsibilities with government relations, we have been engaged with some of the position statements to work, that that's part of the reason we pulled 7.03 tonight, and also helping to aid the Lee Summit Chamber and in its development of issue positions, especially those that would affect the school district. And I know that the Government Relations Committee of the Lee Summit Chamber will appreciate having one of those early copies, Superintendent Carpenter, tomorrow morning at their meeting. So, thank you for being present for that. And that's what I want to report on tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
The CAC Steering Committee will meet on December 11th.
The CAC Steering Committee will meet on December 11th to plan the January meeting, which will be at Great Beginnings. I'm real excited about that because at our last, we talked about this, our last meeting, the, there were several who didn't even know where or what the Great Beginnings was all about, so we're gonna have that meeting there. There have been no TIF Commission meetings since back in June, and in a little while, we'll have a Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Ploddy?
Okay, the committees that I serve on did not meet this last month, but we do have a Business Roundtable meeting coming up on December 6th from 8:00 to 9:30. I always enjoy getting together and hearing from our fellow business owners and sharing the good news of the district. While I do not serve as the representative for the board representative between the foundation and the board, I do serve on the Taste of Lee Summit Planning Committee, and that is coming up. We do have our first meeting Monday night, 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., so really excited about that as well. So, I think that's all I wish to say.
Ms. Stone?
All right, Lisa McCairs, Mayor's Character Breakfast, mark this down on your calendars. Thursday, January 25th at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. I mean, when else do you eat breakfast? So, 7:00 a.m. And the speaker is Ryan LaFevere this year, so he'll be really good. The Holly Fest was last weekend, and $14,500 approximately was raised for the DARE program, so everyone get their DARE t-shirts. I think that's pretty cool. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Rutherford?
No committee meetings for me other than Finance, which we'll do next.
Mrs. Fritchie?
Hello, all right. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Phyllis for filling in for me at the last meeting because I had to be gone because of my shoulder surgery, and everybody made that abundantly clear at the last meeting. I watched the video, and you guys nailed it.[866.94][866.94][laughter] I also, I also, though, am gonna report tonight on Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Lee Summit Educational Foundation is kicking off the planning for Taste of Lee Summit, as Phyllis said. This is an annual event that celebrates, and this year, the foundation's 25th birthday, and it is scheduled for Saturday, March 3rd, so put that one on your calendar, too. Please mark the date. Once that is announced, those tickets go pretty fast, so be sure and, you know, get in there and get your tickets when that comes out. The first planning team meeting, as she said, is coming up next Monday evening, November 20th, 5:00 to 6:30 at Tingle Flooring, for those involved in the planning meeting. And if you have a great auction item to donate, or if you would like to help plan this very important fundraising event, please contact Cheryl Frankie with the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Thank you.
Other than our regular monthly meeting with Dr. Carpenter, I have not had any meetings this month to attend with the school district. So, we are ready now for our next item, which is our Finance Report, and I will turn that over to our Finance Committee for their report.
Finance Committee met yesterday morning. Investments through October total approximately $71.4 million. Operating revenues and expenses are comparable percentage-wise to the prior year and within expected budget estimates. Some other finance issues discussed was District Improvement Change Order Number Four, which is the final change order for these projects, which includes three minor items needed for completion. Total change order increase of $3,309.99 is within the budgeted bond resources. MIC Change Order Number 15, Change Order Number 15 includes six owner-directed items required to complete the project and results in a net credit to the budget. At this time, it is anticipated that one additional change order will be needed to fully complete this project. Commentary for both of those items, those are completed or nearing completion of two incredibly large efforts and a great many district improvements, including MIC, so almost the end of an era there. Construction and maintenance update, Kyle Gorrell updated the status of the Woodland Sewer and the remaining projects authorized in the 2015 bond. It was reported that an engineering report was received this week regarding options to address the Woodland Sewer issues. Staff will be reviewing the final report and will prepare a summary of options for discussion at a future board meeting. Mr. President, I have two motions this evening. First is to approve the transfer of $3,061,801.07 from the General Revenue Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move money from our General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund. Do we have any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, Mr. President, my next motion would be to approve the Treasurer's Report and payment of the bills.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Report and payment of the bills. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, both motions carry. For our audience at home, and the maybe two or three of you who are here who do not know why we have a consent agenda, I'm just assuming, not that anybody actually probably doesn't know, our rules of order provide for us to have a consent agenda which lists several items for board approval by a single motion. Most of these items are listed under the consent agenda, have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation, and documenting, documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure that an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed, as you've already seen, from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So, at this point, I will accept a motion for our consent agenda.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7.01 through 7.06 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda items? Ms. Fritchie?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on 7.03, approval of the 2018 legislative platform, just for our audience. This is a strong legislative platform that includes our district's support of accountability standards for, pardon me?
We pulled that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
Mr. President, I would want to add to the discussion of the consent agenda items, the uniqueness of us having 7.02 as a first and final reading tonight, and if you want to go ahead and remind the audience of the practice of the board...
Yes, Dr. Carpenter, did you want to take that one, please?
Item 7.02 is policy, item 7.02 is policy BBBA, and that policy went to the board today during a work session, but we're asking for action because it's relative to the packets necessary for board candidate filings. And if we did not approve that item today, we would not be prepared for preparation of packets for our board candidates. That's not our normal process. All policies heard during today's work session. We'll have a first reading next month and a subsequent second reading before board approval. But, thank you, Director Clark, for bringing that to our attention. Very important, that has implications for the production of board packets as qualification season is right around the corner.
Yes, and I will add additionally to Dr. Carpenter's comments, that these policies are driven in large part by the state legislature, and sometimes when they make a change in a policy, as they've done with this one, we don't get it until right before it's to be implemented, which didn't give us time to go through the normal process. I will assure you that there was only one change, and that was one word that was stricken from that policy, but it did significantly change policy, hence, we need to approve that tonight. So, if there are any questions about that, I think the policy is available for you to view on our board docs. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, I believe, on this, on this item. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number eight, is the ratification of contracts over $5,000. This is also a consent item. I will remind the public that occasionally, it is necessary for a contract to be enacted prior to the board being able to approve it because of the nature of the contract and the subsequent, perhaps, penalties that would, we would incur if we were not able to ratify that or approve that contract at the time. Some items are of the nature that they cannot wait for a whole month for the board to approve them, so we give our designee the opportunity to sign those contracts then with the board ratifying those at this point in our meeting. We have three of those items on that today. We'll accept a motion for that, for that item.
I have a motion for the ratification of contracts of over $5,000 as presented in items 8.02 through 8.03.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for this particular item. Is there any question or discussion on these items?
I would just like to, I just think it's important to point out, Mr. President, that on the, that the board, or the school district has chosen and we've accepted the responsibility this year, again, to pay for the ACT tests. Again, I think, as we've looked in my short term on the, on the board, we have tried to help in the costs, from reducing parking lot fees to all other kinds of fees, and I don't know how many other districts are doing this. Last year, the state required it, and this year, we, I think something like 1,600 students will be able to take the VACT as part of their journey towards advanced education.
And even better, it came in $5 less than projected.
That's right, yeah.
Per person.
Oh, well, now, that's a big deal.[1455.33][1455.33][laughter] As times 1,600, all of a sudden, that looks a lot better than just $5 less.[1460.01][1460.01][laughter] Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contracts over, to ratify the contracts over $5,000. Is there any further discussion on any of that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, as I've indicated, we have another consent agenda. These are contracts that are over $5,000, and these are all contracts that have been reviewed by a board committee or by the board as a whole. All documents are provided for this ahead of time so that everyone has an opportunity to go through these and look at those. So, with that in mind, I will accept a motion on this one as well.
I move that the board approve new contracts over $5,000 as presented in Consent Agenda Items 9.02 through 9.06.
Okay, we have a motion and a second regarding this one. Is there any discussion or clarification on any of these items? Kim?
I believe this one's still on here.[1540.83][1540.83][laughter] I'm sorry about the other. I just wanted to bring up the 9.04 on here, approved product tailoring services scope of work. Just looking at that, the audience or the general public might not know what that is, and I understand in the descriptions that this contract will implement a new process of delivering employee contracts electronically, and that Power School is the selected vendor. I would just invite Dr. Miller to just elaborate on that a little bit because this will be a new way of operating for us.
Absolutely, I'll tell you what, we're very excited. We had an extensive team take a look at this. There's about four other districts in this area that initiate electronic contracts, and when you look at the amount of time, when we go through almost 2,600 employees in which contracts are involved, and we look at paper sourcing, we look at copies, we look at mailing, we are excited to, number one, offer a better service to our customers, which are our employees. They're not going to have to worry about having to mail, keep a copy in their file, etc. It's gonna be up and running, we anticipate, and beta-tested literally by the end of January, and ready for our contract season. What this will look like, in essence, is this is gonna go hand in glove with another initiative that we started in our HR department, and that is, we are moving away from paper filing, we're moving to all-electronic filing. So, we have basically integrated and approved all of our processes now where they will be electronic in nature. So, we'll send an electronic contract out to an employee, they'll have the ability to print that anytime they want to, in case they need that for tax purposes, for loan purposes, whatever the case may be, and we'll get an immediate electronic signature back so that we can actually anticipate acceptance, or if there's a concern with accepting the contract, we can move on to make sure we're fulfilling the need for our kids. So, we're excited about it. I think it's gonna be great for our employees, it's going to expedite the process in HR and make us much more efficient.
Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Although, I know, and I say this every month, although it doesn't, it looks like we've already been making decisions, this is the part of our agenda which is called our decision part of our agenda, Items for Decision. These are items that are on the agenda tonight as individual items, and we'll start, Dr. Carpenter, with the first one.
Yes, new course proposals. At this time, I'll turn that over to Dr. Collier to address as she would like, or maybe turn it over to the young man, Dr. Sharp.
Sure. So, this evening, Dr. Flack and Dr. Sharp are prepared this evening to walk you through the process that we go through to, for new course proposals and how that works, and present two new courses this evening for your consideration, and so I'll turn it over to those gentlemen.
Thank you. So, this, in essence, is the how a bill becomes a law, of how a course becomes a course in the district, so, and we will do this briefly. The process starts with input from internal groups, curriculum teams, administration, teachers, outside community groups, businesses, industry, and then other outside agencies, DESI requirements for programs that we have, such as IB or Project Lead the Way, etc. So, the process starts with course proposals being submitted, and just like how a bill becomes a law, those get sent to their representatives, the department chairs, and the curriculum specialists. They write those up and submit them. The first process is to take those to, and we're talking about secondary courses, we take those to the secondary principals for a first read, just so they can get an understanding of what's being presented. From that, it goes to the Curriculum Review Team, which is all of the department chairs, so they can provide feedback as a group on the merits of those courses that have been offered up. So they can provide feedback as a group on the merits of those courses that have been offered up. While we do that, we invite the principals to come in and kind of listen to that debate and that conversation so they can get a feel for how the department chairs feel about it. Then it goes to the secondary principals team for a review. And they have a deep discussion about staffing and merits of courses and whether or not we should offer them. And each of those groups provide a recommendation on whether or not they can support it or not. Then it goes to Dr. Sharp and I. We sit down and review all of those and make a recommendation to the instructional operations team. We present it to the IOT. They debate those merits and move forward with a recommendation to the superintendent's operation team. We bring to them the courses that we suggest be approved. And then those go to the Board of Education for approval. So that's the process. And as you can see, it starts at the end of September, early October, and ends with the November board meeting. So courses, there are two courses that we're bringing for your approval tonight. And the first one is a Project Lead the Way Computer Science Essentials. It is another course in the progression of that computer science classes. It's a year-long course, there's no prerequisite. It's practical credit, as you can see, available to 912 students. And this is an entry-level course that students can take prior to taking computer science principles. So that's the first course. The second course is through some recommendations through, that Elaine has received from some outside business partners and part of that Summit Technology Academy information that they receive. It's a year-long course called Executive Finance and Fintech. It's a weighted course, as all of the courses are at Summit Technology Academy. It does have a prerequisite of B minus or better in accounting or college accounting. Looking at dual credit with MCC and UCM, available to students in grades 11, 12, taught at Summit Tech, and that's really to address the high needs of fintech industry. So, Dr. Sharp, anything?
Yes, to add to Dr. Flack's discussion on these two new courses that we have here. We have roughly 285 courses in our course description guide that we have right now for students to offer, for our secondary students to take. It's quite robust, if you will. Project Lead the Way in Lee Summit goes back to almost Bob starting this at Summit Technology Academy. So we're pretty robust with that. We are, I consider us one of the area leaders in Project Lead the Way from start to finish, from baseline to capstone. I'm quite proud of that program, having accepted, taken that from Bob to grow that to where we are now, to the courses and all the course sequences that we have. And what the Project Lead the Way course with this computer science class that we have now gives us a three-course start to be able to give our freshmen a start in the essentials. And then they go to principals and then they'll go to computer science A, which it's difficult to explain in a short presentation, the amount of empowerment these kids have in these courses as well as the post-secondary options that they have, whether they score well on these exams and things that they can take to college with them to get that. It's a great class that, it's a computational thinking class with collaboration and programming. So it's a good one. It gives us another sequence that we have a really, it continues our strong tradition of Project Lead the Way STEM-based classes internally Summit. Fintech is another exciting one out there at Summit Technology Academy. But it will only make if we can get the outside enrollment externally to pay for the FTE. And if we're sitting at $77,000 for an FTE, we're going to need roughly 20 kids from the outside. People ask that class is kind of unique in nomenclature there, so what is that and what does that mean? Fintech, KC Tech Council has named Kansas City a hub for what they call finance technology. And that's where business and finance and technology come together. It talks about how we spend, how we save, how we process and protect our money. Because there's a lot of things in the area where the financial industry is a target of disruptive technology. So our students and our kids coming together, we can take the business world and the tech world to combine them together. And that's the rationale for that class. Hopefully, we can get that to make because it's pretty exciting. So there's those two courses. We did a short presentation on the process. I can tell Eric went very, very quickly through that and did a very nice job succinctly. But these courses are vetted thoroughly among quite a few professionals to be able to discuss the needs of what we need to be able to add to our thing to make the best decisions for our kids. So appreciate your thoughts on that. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to take them at this time.
Adam?
I'll first admit my complete bias on the topics on fintech and executive finance course. I appreciate the process and how you explained that. You could have just asked me and I could have shown you from my company a couple dozen job descriptions that name some of those themes and skills right there. So hopefully, these kids can come to talk to me a couple of years after they graduate high school. But my question would be, you mentioned kind of a minimum enrollment that we would need to do this. I mean, other than being presented in the course catalog, if it's something we feel strongly about, are we doing anything extra to promote the new courses with our student population or how do we typically roll that out?
Well, that's a great question, Adam, on that. Considering, once that does go into the course description guide, Elaine and Jeremy have a great marketing plan that they have utilized year by year to be able to get that out. They produce quite a number of brochures that are excellent, quite a number of flyers, and they host quite a number of nights. And as you could imagine, students from external school districts wanting to be students at MIC Summit Tech, it's become pretty easy to recruit to get to that building when they come in and see it. So they will do that and host a number of nights. And then that course will be up. And of course, they will have to get out onto the road and they will have to travel from school to school that sends and to get in front of sophomores and to get in front of their back-to-school nights and to get in front of their people to be able to start selling that class. And that's how it works.
One quick addition, I try not to ask for a whole lot, but I would love to attend some days of that class once we get it.
Well, I'm sure we could put you on the guest speaker list. Absolutely.
That would thrill me more than you would ever know if I could be a guest speaker. But that's overreach. I just would like to sit in and listen and see what we're doing. But happy to offer guest speaking services as well.
Do we have other questions for Dr. Flack and Dr. Sharp? I did have one. Actually, it's one question, but it's about both courses. Who's going to be teaching both courses? What are we looking for in terms of staff or certification?
The Project Lead the Way course, you can either teach with probably most likely a science teacher or a business teacher or a computer teacher. Depends on where it'll have to, and President White will have to go with an existing staff member. So principals will have to sit down and take a look at existing staff and existing departments. It's one of those things, they'll have to try to find a staff member that's willing to go to the training. Because as you know, it's two weeks, three weeks outside of their, out of their life in the summertime. I personally, at least on West, had two different people teaching this class. One was a chemistry teacher who was a robotics head coach, which was very interested in it. So he was very good. And then I had a business teacher doing the other one. So that'll be kind of the options that they'll pick from there for that. The fintech will have to be, really take a look and sit down with Jeremy and Elaine and specifically if that class is going to be dual credit. So you're going to have to look for a highly specialized staff member that has the ability to teach that course. Probably somebody I would guess with an MBA and to be able to have a teaching degree to be able to do it so they can also, the kids can get the dual credit and the school credit. And believe it or not, we do have a couple of staff members in our school districts who do have MBAs. So we'll see.
That's great, thank you for that. I know that's always a challenge when we come up with specialized courses to find the staff as the state. And maybe you can answer this, has the state kind of relaxed a little bit on their requirements for credit as to who teaches a class? Because that was a big problem in the past, finding people to match what the state thinks that we ought to be doing to issue a credit.
And that's a terrific question. The Missouri Higher Learning Commission has extended what they consider, at least through UCM and some other universities. It's university-specific, but then there was the Missouri Higher Learning Commission that extended through 2022, the requirements. If you have a master's degree, let's say, in curriculum instruction, but you want to teach a dual credit, they will offer, if you're up to 18 hours or close to 18 hours, they will allow you to teach as long as you are working towards that degree. They were pretty stringent upon that and tried to say a few years ago that you had to have the degree, a master's degree in field. And what it did was is a lot of the rural school districts could not compete with suburban school districts when it came to being able to hire those additional staff members with that type of certification. So they had to back that off to be able to get those staff members in to give those opportunities for their kids.
Yeah, I know that for someone to teach ninth graders with a doctorate in English doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Do we need a motion, I believe?
Yes, we do. And I move that the Board of Education approve the addition of the attached courses as presented for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is our personnel report. Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, at this point, I'll turn that over to Dr. Miller.
Absolutely, thank you, sir. I would entertain any questions that the board might have. And then pending a motion on this, I would have an announcement to make.
Board have any questions for Dr. Miller? Okay, we'll entertain a motion, please. I assume I didn't get one.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move that the personnel transactions be approved as presented and contracts issued. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? And if not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dennis, did you have something you wanted to ask?
I was just curious from being new on the board, the numbers that we see here and as these come, is that pretty typical year in, year out of the transfers and those kind of things at this time of year?
Absolutely, great question. To be quite honest, Mr. Smith, sometimes it ebbs and flows. But for the most part, if you look at our annual numbers, which is what we do on a basis, especially every July and August, we're about par for the course right now. I will say this much, though, the economy is better because when we look at our hourly and we look at some of our support areas, we're having a little bit more difficult time hiring in those areas and we're finding more turnover. That kind of that $9 to $14 job is readily available out there in our area. So we're seeing quite a bit of turnover there.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that concludes.
I do have an announcement.
Oh, yes, Jeff, you had an announcement, I'm sorry.
You just got through making a super decision when it comes to supporting our school district. And that is Krista Bataglia. If you look at our personnel report, you just moved her from purchasing supervisor to purchasing coordinator. Had the opportunity, actually hired Krista back, I think it was in October of 2012 is when she came to the district. And over in purchasing, supported Ron Cox in the entire area. And we're moving her through some realignment through the leadership of Dr. Hedrick. She'll be leading that department now. And I can't think of a better person to make sure that we're legally compliant, make sure we're getting the best purchasing power that we can out there. And she's very detail-oriented. So just really proud of Krista and look forward to her contributions to that area. Dr. Hedrick, anything else? Okay, Krista, congratulations.
We have no presentations tonight. And we do have two written reports. Did anyone have any questions on the written reports that were submitted? Kim?
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. When I was reading through the professional development program evaluation, I was just really impressed. I thought it was a really comprehensive evaluation of our professional development program. And one of the key points is that the requirements for professional development from the state and the federal agencies seem to be increasing and that there is only so much time available within the school calendar year to accommodate those requirements. So I applaud your overarching recommendations in regards to enhancing communication about staff development throughout the district and community and continuing to educate the community on the importance of staff development, teacher collaboration, and time for teachers and educators to implement district initiatives. It seems that when teacher in-service days appear on the calendar, just as this is my observation, seems when teacher in-service days appear on the calendar, parents do not seem to be real well-informed on exactly what the teachers are learning on those days and exactly how it would benefit their students. So I just had an idea, perhaps electronic newsletter articles that go out prior to teacher training days might help parents to be more informed. Just one little idea that might help. But it's a great report, thank you.
I can piggyback onto that just by saying that I think as Dr. Carpenter talked about, issues that we want to grapple with as a district, another issue that we need to grapple with is the time that teachers need in order to be fully competent in today's teaching workplace. And three or four professional development days a year just isn't going to get it anymore. So at some point, the board is going to have to look at, how are we going to provide those opportunities for our staff without impacting the school day negatively and the students' ability to get what they need? And this is a major challenge for boards across the nation as to how we can do that. We tend to get locked into that 180-day piece. And that may not be the best model for us to work in. And it's a 180-day piece at X number of dollars. And the X number of dollars part is our responsibility here. And at some point, we're going to have to try to get a little more creative about how that looks. And that's my soapbox, so I won't belabor that. But I do think it's important for the public to note that we do the best that we can to train our teachers with the very limited number of opportunities that we have. And that we need greater opportunities for our staff to be fully trained in all of the things that are now expected that teachers will do. And I think that's a challenge. So with that said, it is time to go to our roundtable discussion. And I've probably already used my time. And I think I'll start down there with Kim, I'll start with you.
Okay, just a quick one. Last Friday, I had the honor of attending the Veterans Day Appreciation Program Assembly at Lee Summit High School. It was patriotic and inspirational, made me cheer up, honestly. I just wanted to say kudos to Dr. John Falkenberry and his staff members who helped organize that program. Veterans were invited to the program and were recognized. And there were video clips of former Lee Summit High School students who are on active duty in the United States and other countries. And those were played for all the students to see. And every active service person ended his or her greeting to the students at those assemblies with "Go Tigers." It was just, it was just really awesome. They handed out programs, it was a great assembly.
Thank you, Kim. Adam?
Our roundtable is, hope everyone has a great holiday next week. Appreciate seeing you all tonight.
Julie?
This is a first, I really. I say what, I was going to say what Adam says, but I really don't have a report. But enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Jackie?
Usually you come down this way, you're trying to.
Switch it around a little bit.
They didn't say they'd yield their time, but I'll take it. I've been busy, okay? The CAC meeting that they talked about earlier, I attended and mostly because I wanted to see how it had changed since I was on it in the early 90s. And it is a very impressive group. And I know they're a real asset to the district. So thanks to all the volunteer leadership of that group and the participants in it. So I thought that was a really, really great meeting and a lot of good dialogue. Janice is still here and I observed her facilitation there in some of the groups and it was excellent. Over the weekend, I attended the Holly Festival that benefited Lee Summit Cares. And Adam and Dennis will like to hear that I scored the signed Tiger football with Charles Harris's, you know, he's a first-rounder from Mizzou. So he plays for another team we won't talk about, but we hope we beat on Christmas Eve. And so that was a great event. And they'll host that again next year at the Bernard Campbell Middle School. Also, I mentioned earlier that I had the opportunity to attend the Lee Summit North Swim Team End of Season banquet. And that was really special to see all those great guys, even before they were here. A really, a really great group of kids. And I appreciate having affiliation there and wish Coach Ray well in his future endeavors. And I was at the Lee Summit EcoDevo event yesterday and had some conversations around workforce development with some of their leadership. So they're going to be focusing on that and are interested in connecting appropriately, both with the district and. both with the district and the higher education community. And a key off of what Kim was mentioning on the veterans event, you know, I noticed on the calendar that there's going to be an alumni event for the STA alums. I really would like to see an alumni event around those young men and women that we all got excited about at the graduations, and applauded, and gave a standing ovation for. I'd love to see an alumni event for all of those folks that have gone on to military service from the district. But that's just a, probably a pie-in-the-sky idea. Thanks for the time.
Dennis?
I also attended the Holly Fest, along with my wife, on Saturday. And I didn't get to get the football. I had to buy two holiday wreaths that will hang on our door. I don't know what was wrong with the two we had, but we have two more now. So anyway. I also, well, it's the truth. Oh, God, she'll probably watch the TV for the first time, too, now. The, I really appreciate your 100-day report. Very, very informative. And I would, and I don't know how we do this, but maybe we could get, if we wanted, is board members, that book on George Carus?
Yes.
That, and...
Innovations like that, yes.
If some way, at least how we could locate that somehow. Just one other quick...
It's on Amazon, probably.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll get my Kindle out. And every month, the Lee Summit Rotary Club has Student Day at Rotary. And today, and it usually revolves around our three high schools. And each month, one of the high schools has the program. Well, today, Dr. Meisenheimer, the student from Lee Summit North brought their Scholar Bowl team, very intelligent kids. So there was a little competition. And so our very own superintendent and...
Carl Chenery.
Carl Chenery and John Claus, and another, actually, they took them on in a little contest. I will have to say that the, that the students won the contest, but it was, it would have been worse, had not our superintendent helped out a little bit and got some of the answers correctly. So again, Dr. Meisen, thanks for a great program today, and another way our students do so well. So that's it.
Billis?
Yes, I missed Rotary today. I'm typically at most of them, but I missed it today. And I'm sorry that I missed seeing your kids wop up on the staff here. So as an arts advocate in our community, and somebody very involved in the arts, I'm going to give a plug for our three high schools. They are doing fantastic musicals that I wish everyone in the community could get out and support, because what our directors are presenting is way above what I believe is the standard for high school musicals. I've seen a lot of them in my time. Last weekend, I had the privilege to attend Lee Summit West's How to Succeed in Business. Brad Rackers directed it. Amy Krikey was the music director. It was phenomenal. It was fun. It was exciting, and I just loved it. I live for musical theater. I was telling Joe Hatley, it's just my life, musical theater. Lee Summit North opened last weekend with Catch Me If You Can. I'm going to go see that Saturday night. I'm really excited about it. Lee Summit High School opened last weekend as well, The Hunchback of Notre Dame. Micah Hensley directed that, and I've had the privilege of assistant directing that with him. And we have had a really good time and a brilliant cast. And I want to share with you all something really great out there. My daughter had a career in New York City and had the privilege of working with Stephen Schwartz, who has written many, many Broadway shows. He's a famous composer and lyricist. He did write the lyrics for Hunchback of Notre Dame. So I took a quantum leap, and I emailed him and asked him, I told him about Lee Summit High School performing one of his shows. He wrote it, wrote the lyrics for it, and if he would send the kids a good luck note. Again, just taking a quantum leap. I told him about our programs in the district, how we have trained many, many outstanding singers, dancers, and actors. And he got back to me with the coolest note, and it wishes the whole cast and crew of The Hunchback of Notre Dame on a good second weekend. And tomorrow night, I'm going to present that letter to every one of the kids. They're going to get to frame it. It's really awesome. I've got it here. It's just incredible. It is from him. So go see the shows. These directors put in incredible hours to present these shows, more than I think people would realize. All of our coaches in our district work very hard, and these coaches are no exception. So anyway, also, I am on the board for the symphony. I love it. The Lee Summit Historical Society had a roast for Russ Berlin. I happened to be in attendance. I got to put a tutu on him, so he wore it that night. They raised money for the museum, which was really awesome. And it was a fun evening of just talking about the arts. Coming up, December 9th, is the Holiday Concert. It's a little trip across the pond. Please go see these shows. They have a goal of selling 150 more tickets for every show, and they met that goal at the previous concert. And now you'll see singers. There aren't any dancers for this one, but there will be singers. I will have some of my voice students that will be performing as well with the symphony. I'm real excited about it. And then I've been asked to chair the Education Task Force for the symphony, and working on just ways to expose our young children to the symphony, and to build an audience, starting even at the preschool age, working on some events like that. So and I do wish to take this opportunity to wish my fellow board members a Happy Thanksgiving. I'm blessed to have you in my lives. And for all of you out there watching the end of this meeting and seeing us laugh while we do work very, very hard, we have a lot of fun. And I think that is what makes it so special with this group. And then finally, we have a really hard-working superintendent. And I knew that he was working hard for the last 100 days. I've seen it. I've seen him everywhere. But I had no clue. That was a fantastic presentation tonight. Thank you so much, and that's all I have to say.
Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. I'll be brief. As we pause for Thanksgiving, I do want to give thanks to the folks around this dais.
Thanking the folks that are here across the dais for their support of our district and the work that we attempt to do each day, and also the folks that are out there remaining, and those who had to leave. But we have some fine, fine administrators that are really embracing some work that I believe is transformative and will be transformative long-term. They make me proud. The only other thing that I would add is, in the back of the room, is a gentleman by the name of Alan Downing. So Alan, just raise your hand. But Alan Downing is a SLU student who has to get 60 hours in his district. He's in another district we won't call by name. And he has to get 40 hours outside of district, and he must be scraping the bottom of the barrel, because he found me and wanted to get some doctoral hours and following me around a little bit. So we had our first meeting on yesterday, and he'll be around the district as he secures his 40 hours and receives his doctorate degree. So looking forward to continue to work with you, Alan.
Well, thank you all for your roundtable comments. I will just end with, again, echoing Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. And I hope you have an opportunity to eat whatever you want, because as we know, there are no calories on Thanksgiving. So please do that, and tell your doctor that I said it was okay. Not that that will matter. And I did want to say again, and I've said this so many times, it feels like a broken record, but I do appreciate the work of our board. We are getting a lot of things done. And it, I know at times, especially for those at home watching, that it seems as if, well, all they ever do is just vote yes. Well, it's not quite that way. There's a ton of work and discussion that goes into these, things that you all don't get a chance necessarily to see. But there's a lot of work and a lot of discussion, a lot of compromise and reworking of things, so that they best meet the needs of our students. And every person up here is interested in that primarily. And I think that the hard work that they do, and believe me, we read, I don't know how many policies it was tonight, about 10, 10 or 15 policies tonight that we read. And those tend to be between five and 10 or 12 pages long. And everybody came prepared, and everyone has done a super job to look at the documents that are handed out, and to come to the meetings ready to go. And that makes the job a lot easier. And I think that it will make our district better in the long run as we move forward. We have a lot of challenges, a lot of things we need to work on. But I, for one, am excited about the possibilities. It's, I'm always one that wants to do something a little different. Let's change things up, because we've been doing it the same way for a while. So this, these kind of things don't bother me, and I hope they don't bother anyone else, as long as we do the work that's required to make sure that the changes that we make are positive. So Kim?
I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to my mama. She's sitting right there on the front row, and she sat here and listened for the whole meeting. So thanks, Mom. I love you.
Sadly, I think that's required as a mom, that you do those kind of things. And there are grandpa duties, too. I might add that I did go to Pleasant Lee Elementary's third-grade program on Tuesday night, and it was spectacular. I'm telling you, I've never seen such dancing and singing in my entire life. So...
I'm glad. I think I'm going to slip it, because for 25 years I taught, I never attended a school board. I mean, I didn't have time. I was probably working for the next day.
And now, at this point, you probably know why you didn't come to any of those. So, but we appreciate your attendance, and we appreciate all of you. With no further ado, we are adjourned.